Twenty, West Smithland Area School District Regular Board Meeting is being held virtually via Zoom. Meeting to begin at seven oh four. Opening exercises. Uh, roll call, Joe. You're on mute, Joe.
All right, Ahearn?
Here.
Alexandrov?
Here.
Blazevich?
Here.
Engler?
Here.
Kostalnik? Debbie? She, she is here. She's on mute.
Here.
Okay, Marshall?
Present.
Mattis?
Here.
White?
Here.
And DeSenzio?
Here. Presentations.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a presentation tonight by Mr. Steve Ford. He's our Director of Technology. Mr. Ford?
Yes, guys, I want to bring up a issue here that's going to affect us into the future and quite presently, like in the next actual three hundred and sixty-five days here, and that is going to be our server backend systems. I think I talked to you guys a little bit about that, the tech, tech council meeting, if you were there. Long and short of it, we're coming up on a hardware refresh. It's every five years approximately. And per my notes here, what I'm looking at is if we would continue to do this ourselves, we would have to purchase at minimum four servers because our current servers are getting some years on them there. Our oldest server is from two thousand thirteen. Our newest server addition is from two thousand seventeen, and I just saw one of those. And my estimates to do that, it's right around thirty-two thousand and about thirty-two eight to do that. That's not the real big issue. The real big issue is the storage system that we all rely on every day. That is very dated here. That's coming in from two thousand fifteen. To retrofit that storage system, it would cost the district, uh, let's see here. Those are about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars apiece. We currently have four of them, but the ones I picked out would basically bring us to two instead of four. Again, they're about a hundred and seventy-some-odd thousand dollars apiece, all flash storage. And they're not even the highest-end stuff, but they're perfect to get us by with. And again, we would have to replace those every five years. What I'm proposing to do would be to offshore our compute power, our storage, to a local vendor here in a proper data center that has disaster recovery backups and all that stuff included. And that's, uh, it comes at a price tag of, you know, five thousand eighty dollars a month over the course of sixty months. Or, um, as I've done my math on here, this is based on estimates, it'd be about nine thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars a month in that same sixty-month term to do it ourselves. And we would actually get the added benefit of twenty-four-hour staffing, proper fire suppression, a data center environment. It's just all around a better solution. The way I look at it, we're going to save somewhere in the area of, I think, two hundred thousand dollars just by switching to that over the course of that sixty months, and we won't incur the added headache of having to worry about it breaking in the middle of the night. That's pretty much where I'm at with it.
All right, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Steve did, I, I apologize. I was on the technology committee. I know we discussed some of this, but my concern is that some of that is contractual in nature with Ford and, um, talking about an offset for that. So I, I just wanted to make sure that that was discussed. I don't know if Matt's on here. I can't see him.
Yeah, I'm here.
It's just, Matt, I thought that that was in Ford's contract to, um, make sure that they were overseeing those servers. And I just want everyone to be aware that that's an additional cost on top of their contract, that some of that cost was in the contract. That's all.
Yeah, and I think whenever we come to, um, to, to talk about that contract, we can bring that up for a topic of discussion if we want to extend that, uh, the Ford agreement. As it, it, because it is a reduction in something that, um, the technology team would have to worry about on a day-to-day basis. And that's the benefit of going to a dedicated service provider.
I just want the board to understand that they've already contracted for this service through Ford. Now we're doing another contract for the same service. I, I just want them to be aware. Although I don't want to say that the hardware was not included, I think, and that's to be fair to Steve. The actual servers themselves weren't included in that agreement, but the maintenance of that, the backup of that and the protection of that was in their agreement. I just want the board to understand that you're, you're double contracting for that now.
Well, would we address, would we make, and that, would we were, would we reflect that change if we were to retain Ford moving forward in the future? I mean, their contracts only through, through what?
Isn't it, it's through June?
Yes, it's through June, so we can, we can make that change in June. I don't know when we're undergoing this contract. I just wanted to make sure that they were overlapping, that we were addressing that. If we're not going to start this new contract until after their contract expires, we certainly can deal with that in the new contract.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is an immediate change. Um, it's going to take time. We wanted, didn't want to wait till the summer to make all of these changes all at the same time and with all of the other summer activities that'll be going on, because that's sort of when nobody's, you know, the, the, that's a good opportunity for the technology folks to do a lot of work. And, and, and I think, I think too, like, we can get more granular in the details of what's covered in the Ford contract versus what's covered in this contract, because I, there still needs to be people responsible for the, a certain layer of information, a certain layer of systems that are in this new system, this new environment that, that Steve will be responsible for. So, so I don't know how, you know, we'll just have to talk about that a little bit as to how we separate the difference between what this new service provider would be providing and what Ford would be providing and to be more clear as to exactly what we're, who we're paying for to do what. But you bring up a very good point.
Has it been discussed that we haven't taken out any long-term debt for servers, have we?
I don't think that we have. I mean, I can verify that, but I just know that what we do have on record right now, I have a service record of when everything was installed. And our oldest machines date back to, I think, six-three of two thousand thirteen, and our newest addition is like six-six of two thousand seventeen. I'm not sure if there's still a service contract or, or, um, oh, what am I looking for the word? If they're still financed, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's, that, that they are. And I wanted to clear up something else, too. Maybe, maybe I spoke wrong. Maybe I didn't, uh, enunciate this correctly. But the vendor will only be supplying hardware and the maintenance of that hardware and the physical capabilities. We will still maintain one hundred percent of our operational duties. I mean, we will, I mean, we'll still have to run our VMware environment, our virtual machines, all that. The only thing that we don't have to worry about is if it breaks in the middle of the night. That's one hundred percent on the vendor at that point to mediate. That's a problem that we would have to shoulder the burden on, that we're passing to them. But as far as day-to-day maintenance goes, we, we're still one hundred percent required to do that ourselves.
And it, and it's at almost half the cost, correct?
Uh, it's not half the cost, but it is a significant reduction in our overall cost, yes. So my idea was to get the budget to where it was flat, and we didn't have an unexpected half-million-dollar expenditure every five years.
Steve, I guess this might be for you and Joe. Did you guys finalize that budget proposal? Because we were supposed to get an email. I don't know if the board got one. Maybe I just didn't get one. But I don't know if, did you guys fix that up after our tech meeting?
Well, I, I sent it over to Joe for review, and that's some, that's some deep digging right there. I'm sure that Joe's working on it, but I'm not sure if it's done yet.
I, I would have to say a lot of that, Johnny, is contingent on if we were to move forward with that plan. I think we have to direct, uh, the administration that that's the plan we're in fact going to adopt. And then once we do that, they could probably be a lot more definitive with that. That's just.
I know, I know they just wanted to get the numbers right before they actually brought it back. I think that was a main thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the issue was that Joe hadn't been able to work those numbers in the budget to see what the cost savings or, or cost increase would be.
And I think making sure that the numbers were, uh, reflective of what we were paying, right? To make sure that what was in the budget was out of our financial systems.
So if we look at, um, the servers, which we're really talking about where the data is stored and the ongoing cost that we'll incur going forward, uh, Matt, we talked about it with Steve in some, some other meetings that we've had. And, um, you know, provided the data is right, there will be significant cost savings to the district. I, I think it will be more secure. I think there would be less likelihood of anything bad happening, like say if there would be a fire at the high school and these servers would get wet. Um, and hopefully it will make the system a little bit faster.
Does anybody else have any questions for Steve? All right. Thanks a lot, Steve. We appreciate it. Thanks for the information.
No problem. My pleasure.
All right, moving on. Hearing of the citizens. In order to provide comment through the district's website, the following must be met. Must include your name and home address in the email. Must be a West Smithland Whittaker or Duquesne resident. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Direct email comments to the board president and/or superintendent. And I believe, Mr. Esper, we have one individual submit, uh, questions or comments.
Um, yes, we received one email from Diane Stenasek, and, um, she did not provide her address, but we do know that she is a resident, and I will add that to this and make these comments part of the, uh, minutes. She had one question. She wanted to, um, she questioned the additional charges from her solicitor under invoices. She questioned why we were changing banks, and she wanted to know, um, why the cost of the UPMC, um, Sports Medicine contract was higher than the previous years. Now, she did not specify that in her email. I did call her to ask for clarification. And I did tell her that I believe that all her answer, all her questions will be answered throughout the course of the meeting.
And all I can answer on that, Joe, on item number one is, um, of course, one of them deals with the, uh, federal litigation for Dr. Kostagna. But there are several other smaller items you'll see on there that were litigation items that deal with internal personnel matters that I can't discuss. But they are, uh, internal personnel matters that went to, uh, an arbitration level. And I believe there is one on there, and Gary, pop on if it's true, but I believe that one of them on there is, deals with the, uh, middle school as well. The litigation with the middle school.
Yeah, all those are litigation items that we had discussed, uh, previously. That's how our, I mean, our retainer, that's how it states litigation matters. We tell you of the litigation when it's coming up, and then it's, it's billed in that manner. And, uh, as I told you the other day, the one piece of litigation with, uh, Dr. Kostagna, we, there was a lot of things happening there in, uh, that was a bill for a few months. In January and February, there was a lot of activity.
And I can say that on an accounting end, on my end personally, I do appreciate the fact that they did submit four separate invoices since they were sort, four separate, um, lit, litigation items. So it does make it easier rather than trying to compile everything together all into one. I think it gives it much, much more transparency in, you know, what they're billing for. And I, the other two, I, the other two items will, will be addressed throughout the meeting.
Okay, uh, is, information items?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, there's only one. The district's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual pre-K counts program review has been completed from the onsite monitoring review that occurred on Monday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. The district's program review instrument findings and results showed that the district received a perfect score of three hundred and thirty-three out of three hundred and thirty-three points, which equates to a score of fully meets based on the regulated and non-regulated criteria pursuant to the Pennsylvania pre-K counts statutory regulations and guidance. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Uh, Board Secretary Business Manager's report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I would be respectfully asking for a motion, a second, and approval for the following items. Um, since we did not have a, uh, work session, I will be briefly explaining every item on this agenda. So under, um, Board of Directors, Items A, one through three on page one. Uh, Item one is a resolution, and I don't know, Gary, if you want to, um, explain it to the public.
Yes, the, I'm sorry, I had you muted. The, the resolution before us today is concerning, uh, um, the ongoing construction project we have. And, uh, that resolution, um, is in conformance with the, uh, Department of Education and the Governor's Office here in Pennsylvania. If the board feels that these, uh, construction would affect, uh, you know, future, uh, school years as far as not having the construction done for the coming year, and it is imperative to get that done at this point, then, uh, the board can take an action this evening to approve this resolution permitting the contractors to, uh, begin work again. And during that time, the contractors have to comply with all the rules and regulations of the Department of Labor and Industry, the Governor's Office, and the Department of Education in far as protection for all of its workers, um, hand sanitizers, masks, uh, safe distancing, all of those, uh, type of issues that are involved in the legislation, they would have to comply with upon our passage of this resolution.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mada. Item two is a recommendation that came from me that we change our depository for the twenty, twenty twenty-one school year from our current, uh, bank, which is PNC Bank, uh, to First National Bank. There are a lot of reasons why the board is, um, aware of the reasons, and, and I don't want to go through them individually other than I just think that we'll, we will be better served by First National Bank. Uh, and I do appreciate the board supporting my recommendation on this, uh, motion. Is there any questions on that? Okay, and item three is recommended the board accept a, um, a, a proposal from the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission. It's actually an offer to purchase, uh, in summary, just compensation in the amount of a hundred and ninety-two thousand. And I'll briefly explain that, uh, as we know, the Mon Valley Expressway is coming through the area. The first step in this project is they're going to actually, uh, move Commonwealth Avenue and Hoffman Boulevard. And that's, that's the roads. Hoffman, as you know, leads down to Kennywood. Part of that movement, they will also be moving the access road that leads behind our stadium. So that, that access road is going to be moved up to the top where the, uh, parking lot is to the left of the stadium, and it will go behind the stadium. And then the right-ofways and all the other stuff that was in the letter that you got, the expressway is going to run behind the softball field and the baseball field, and they will be taking, um, some property, um, behind there for right-ofway. They're, they're not going to build a road on it, but it will be for the right-ofway. This land is, uh, nonusable. We, we would never use it. And so for them, you know, taking it, um, and they're, and that, the one ninety-two is the monetary aspect. Obviously, you're going to redo the roads and curbs and everything that they disturb on our actual property itself. But that's the offer for the, the, the headaches, if you would, them using our land for a period of time while this project is being constructed and for the right-ofway parcels that they're actually taking.
Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate you explaining it.
Is there any?
Do, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'm sorry, who? Motion by Mr. Mattis?
Second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostalnik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And DeSenzio?
Yes.
Move, moving on to five, B, Finance. We only have one item, and that's on page two. It's a, uh, it's a, um, small amount of refunds, uh, because of real estate reassessments and the amount of fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion?
Second.
Uh, roll call or any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Kostalnik?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And DeSenzio?
Yes.
Five C, purchasing on, and contracting items, one through eight on page two. Every year, we, uh, put out a bid offering for services like for the art, uh, general school supplies, football, softball, and, and, and all of the items are listed on the agenda. We have collected those, uh, items. We will be doing a bid opening tomorrow at ten AM here in the administration hall. Item number two is a, a three-year proposal from Baldwin EMS to provide, um, emergency medical services at our home football games. As, as you know, traditionally, we would, um, be billed a lump sum and make that payment. I talked to Todd Plunkett. With the uncertainty of the coronavirus and, you know, not knowing for sure that there will even be a football season. Hopefully, there will be. Instead of, um, doing a lump sum payment or lump sum pricing, uh, we decided to go to a per-game, um, price schedule with, uh, moderate minor increases over the following three years. So we won't have to do this, uh, every year. As you know, Baldwin EMS is just covering the cost of their manpower, so there's no upcharge for fuel or equipment. And so those are the pricing per game, and once we get the football, complete football schedule, I can build that into the budget. Item number three, uh, is, um, is the agreement for, the use of funds agreement for the IDA Part B with the AIU, and then a notice of the adoption of policies and procedures, um, with them. As you know, our IDA be passed, uh, funds from the federal government are passed through the AIU. We submit bills, we get reimbursement. That's the agreements that we have to follow when we do that. Item number four is an agreement with the Delphi Education for Special Education Services. There is no price, um, listed in the motion. They provide three levels of support, behavioral support. That price is eighty-eight, nineteen per day. Uh, special ed ninety-seven oh nine, uh, emotional support, regular ed, and special ed is one forty-nine a day. And your educational success, um, is regular ed and special ed at a hundred dollars a day. Dr. Hoover, we don't normally use them a whole lot. They do ask for, we can't give them a security guarantee, although I don't believe we will be doing that. And those are the prices if we should happen to even use them. Item number five is an agreement that the board to approve an agreement with UPMC Sports Medicine for athletic training services from July of twenty twenty to June of twenty twenty-five. At the cost of forty-six thousand in year one, forty-six, nine, twenty, year two, forty-seven, eight, sixteen, year three, forty-eight, eight, ten, in year four, and I skipped over a year there. And I'm, I'm sorry, the first, the first forty-six thousand was for the first two years. Uh, that was one of Mrs. Stenasek's questions. The prior contract was a five-year contract at forty-six thousand dollars a year. Obviously, costs go up, and, um, these, these increases, in my opinion, are minor in nature, you know, based on inflation and what have. Item number six is the Ratify Service Agreement with the Career Gateway. That is the service that we use to advertise for the superintendent's position. Item number seven is the, is the motion to approve what Steve presented, uh, under Presentations. The, in, go into a five-year contract with Terrace Switch at five thousand and eighty dollars per year. And, um, item number eight is, um, a proposal that the board accepted, proposal from Midland National Life Insurance Company at the rate of eighteen point two cents, uh, per thousand for life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment at point zero two. Uh, this would be a three-year fixed agreement. Our current rate, renewal rate for the company that we currently have, is twenty-six cents for life insurance and, uh, two cents for accidental death and dismemberment. Uh, we estimate the savings would be about fifteen thousand dollars a year over the next, over, each year over the next three years by making this change. This was a, um, Paul Fisher, our insurance agent, we sat down and we started looking at ways where we can, you know, save some money, and this is one thing that we came up.
All right, that, thanks, Joe.
Sorry, Tony, um, did you say Midland or did you say Madison?
Man, I might have said Midland. I'm an old insurance guy. It, it is Madison National. I'm sorry.
Just for clarification.
Yeah, I apologize.
Uh, do I have a motion?
One, I have one other question. Based on what, um, Chrisa said, are we going to vote on number seven? She was questioning overlap of contracts or whatever.
Yeah, I, I mean, Steve or Matt could probably explain that better than I could, but I don't believe that's, I don't know. Go ahead, Matt. You have the floor.
I, I just thought Chrisa sounded like there was an issue.
I, I believe, I believe what that would be is a, if we go for this and vote for it, she's talking about the possibility of reducing that on their upcoming contract if we would extend it as way.
Oh, okay.
Let me be clear, in their current contract, they're supposed to be providing the service, not the actual hardware, but they're supposed to be implementing it, protecting it, uh, serving it, maintaining it. And so I just want, I haven't seen this new contract, so I don't know if those same services, I just want to make sure the board's not paying for two people to provide the same service. I don't have a problem with the hardware, because I know that's not in Ford's contract. But I don't know about the maintenance of the server, because that is in Ford's contract. And then we're going to go ahead and do a contract with someone to provide maintenance on the server, when we've already contracted with someone to do maintenance of the server. I just want to make sure the board's aware of that.
I believe before the servers are ever moved offsite, it's going to be several months, and Ford will be out of their initial contract. If, again, uh, you know, the servers are moved, then we'll obviously renegotiate Ford's contract. We'll take a look at that as a reduction if necessary.
Is there a way that we can do Ford, do the renegotiation and this at the same time? It just makes sense to me to do it together.
I don't think it matters. Um, I, just because this is, this is the equipment charge. This isn't necessarily services, so, and the, the equipment needs to be replaced. And, and we can either buy new equipment and put it in the high school, or we can go this route. And essentially, it's like releasing equipment that somebody takes care of the equipment for us. But Ford would still be responsible for the software that runs on the equipment, which is what Chrisa, which, which is what Chrisa is talking to.
Okay.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blazevich?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahearn. Any other questions or comments?
I think, just, uh, thanks, uh, Chief Todd Plunkett for being more than fair with us. Baldwin EMS is absolutely wonderful, not only for our district, but our entire, uh, community around here. That was a great change that they made many years ago, and, uh, those guys are always there for our kids.
Anyone else? Roll call?
Ahearn?
Yes.
Alexandrov?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes, to all but five.
Kostalnik?
Yes, to all but five.
Marshall?
Yes, but all but five C five.
Mattis?
Yes.
White?
Yes, to all but C five.
And DeSenzio?
Yes.
All right, Mr. President, everything passed on a nine to zero vote, vote with the exception of item five. C five. C five, which passed on a five to four vote. Moving on to five D minutes, item one on page three.
Bob, a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis, second by Mrs. Ahearn. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Item five E reports. Items one through five on page three.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kostalik, second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Item five F, item one on pages three and four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
By Mrs. White, second by Mrs. Kostalik. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Item five G invoices, numbers one through five on page four and five, and I will go through those briefly. Um, the first three are, uh, for legal tax, um, service. Um, and, and I want to, I do want to make a note that I did update the agenda, um, on the website and I did update the agenda that I sent you. Um, item B, there was not a month, so I just added the month. Um, so the first three are for legal tax service. Uh, item one E is the monthly retainer. I'm sorry, one D is the monthly retainer for solicitors. We discussed, uh, items E through H and item I is, uh, the civil and environmental consultants for professional freebies. Um, Dave asked me about that last month and I, and I stumbled about the words that I was looking for. But that is the lot consolidation and subdivision of the Camp Hall Road property. I believe that should be the final payment. Um, they were contracted at eight, eighty-five hundred dollars to do what they did. As you recall, it was a, uh, complete mess. Because the lots were so old and it took a lot of effort to, you know, get everything squared away. And so the drawings right now are, are actually at the borough sign. I, I wanted to try to get them today, but, but we will get them and take the next steps process to, um, have the turnpike purchase that property from us. Item two, at G, the G S A, um, that's for, um, the, it's G S A project. That's for application twelve uh, under the construction fund invoices, item number three. It, there's a G S A project, uh, phase two, application eight, and the G S A project phase three, application two. Application two for, for anybody that's been, um, tuning in or attending the meetings, uh, we had thought that that was paid for. Somehow a bill was missed back in October. Um, of course, did vet it. We do owe them the money. Um, we accounted it as being paid, um, but that, that needs to be paid and that will be paid. And bills payable, which include the P cards.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Item five eight, uh, requisitions other, um, we did have two, uh, personnel meetings, one on April tenth and one on April twenty first. Those are correctly listed.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostalik, second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
DeSenzo.
Yes.
That so concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. Uh, district operations?
Yes, Mr. President, under district operations, um, I'm going to be asking for a motion second and approval on item six. Uh, and I guess it's again numerical one through ten. I'll go over each of them since there was not a work session, the first being a revision to the nineteen, uh, twenty school calendar. That was a result of the primary election day on April twenty second, uh, being moved to June second. And that basically becomes, uh, April twenty second will be a remote learning day now. And, um, June second would be a professional development day. The other change that is going to be made in the calendar is there's, um, June third is no longer West Smithland Kennywood Day. Obviously, the park is not open. Uh, they've asked us to pick a date to move. We moved, we, we picked the date of July fifteenth. Again, the park is still not open and or there's restrictions. It's going to be August seventeenth, which is our fall fantasy day when the, uh, our Titan Band is marching down at Kennywood. So those will be the changes that are reflected, uh, with this revision of the calendar. The second item is I'm asking for a motion, a second approval for the, uh, extended school year E S Y plan. Again, this is something that may not occur unless some of the, uh, social distancing and gathering guidelines are, uh, eased and or lifted. This is for our special needs students who may, um, have some type of regression of learning uh, due to being off in the summer months. So we want to bring them in and provide them activities and so forth. Again, hopefully that'll happen. If not, uh, I'm sure we'll go to a plan and possibly provide again some type of remote, uh, E S Y program. Uh, the third item is the proposed, uh, twenty twenty summer work schedule. Basically the, for six weeks in the summertime, starting with the last week of June, going through the first week of August. Uh, the, uh, individuals who are working, uh, S E I U and, uh, central office and Act ninety-three employers work, employees will work, uh, for ten-hour days, uh, during the summer months. Um, and then the next items, next, uh, four through ten are all personnel items where we're eliminating positions and or creating new positions. Um, even though you'll see basically six positions that are being eliminated and or, uh, created. There's a net, um, additional three that are being added as brand new. Uh, the other positions, a teacher may be, one position may be eliminated with that teacher going into another position. Again, very quickly, uh, one of those positions is a special ed pull-out science program, which is being eliminated at the high school. We have a elimination of a second grade teacher position at, uh, Homeville due to, uh, enrollment. We're creating a special education autistic support, uh, emotional support teacher at Homeville Elementary. We're creating a special ed support life skills position at Clara Barton. We are also approving the, uh, creation of a learning support teacher position at the high school. And then we are also creating a special education life skills support teacher at the high school for twenty twenty-one. And then finally, we're approving, uh, we hopefully will approve the creation of a first grade teacher position at Homeville, which again is due to enrollment. The reason why we had to add these three special education positions are a result of the audit that was recently completed. And P D E is basically making recommendations that due to the caseloads that we currently have, um, with our teachers. We need to add additional features to make sure that they fall within the regulations. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. On, uh, item five, if we eliminate one second grade teacher, what is our classroom size estimated to be?
Um, if we're eliminating that, what ends up happening in the second grade? I believe they're getting a hundred and five students. So it would just be about twenty-one, uh, twenty or twenty-one, uh, at that level. And then, uh, again, we're, we had a big kindergarten over in Homeville. That's why I'm adding it to the first grade because they're moving up. It'll take their enrollment till about twenty-one as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. White.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahearn. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I, I just wanted to point out, uh, just so the public is aware that those four-day work weeks for that six-week period is a result of us shutting the buildings down Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, I have not had the, uh, not been here through the summer. Uh, but Mr. Smart had informed me that by doing that, that it was at least a thirty thousand dollar savings in utilities by, by doing such. So that's why that's done. Obviously, we've done significant upgrades to make our buildings more energy efficient. So I wouldn't expect the savings to be as much as it was in the past. Um, but that's the reason that we have the four-day work week for that six-week period.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, under the superintendent's report, I'm going to be asking for a motion second and approval for seven A, one through four, which are student services. As you'll see, uh, items one through four basically are all, uh, due process case settlements for our special needs, um, uh, students and so forth. Uh, Chris, I don't know if you want to go ahead and comment or you just want me to go ahead and make.
I think we went over these in executive session and some of these are older ones that for some reason I couldn't find in the minutes. So out of an abundance of caution, we're ratifying them. As you're aware, these comp ed funds are set up as a line item in the budget. A check isn't written for that amount. It's tracked through our, uh, general fund. As people need them, uh, they pull from that line item. So I need to make sure that Joe and I are on the same page of setting up those funds in the budget for, um, this budget to come out here at the end of, uh, June. So some of this is a little bit of catch-up. Um, I know that looks a little overwhelming, but I think we went over and discussed some of this stuff, uh, in executive session. And as it's a student-related issue, uh, we can't discuss it in a public meeting.
Yeah, yes, and each, each one of these cases will have a separate expenditure line item where, where expenses will be booked to. So, uh, we can track it effectively.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I have a quick question. What kind of expenses?
Um, they're all education-related. Sometimes it's for technology devices. Um, sometimes it's for tutoring. Sometimes it's for adapted utensils or adapted, um, pencils. I mean, it could be for anything education-related. If the student is gifted on that end, I mean, it could be for what their area they're gifted in, summer camps, things like that. So it's all education-related and has to be related to the lawsuit for the deficiency. It's to make up for that deficiency and it has to be related to that.
Chris, I believe they have to basically get these before they can actually purchase anything. So it'd have to be approved by Leah and or the district.
Yes. The agreements that Joe has, it's very specific in a section what it can be used for. Uh, the law's very specific on what it can be used for. If the request is submitted to Leah, she approves it education-wise and then it's sent over to Joe for you guys to approve financial-wise.
All right, anybody else? Uh, roll call. I think we have that already. I believe we're up to, we need a roll call.
Uh, Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
For first, professional personnel?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, under professional personnel, I'm asking for a motion second and approval for items eight A one, which is a leave of absence.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. White.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahearn. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Non-certified personnel?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, under non-certified person, personnel, I'm going to be asking for a motion second and approval for items uh, nine C one, which is a retirement and nine D one, uh, which is a transfer.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mattis, second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
That takes us down to substitutes.
Uh, there are no substitutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Conferences?
Yeah, conferences, uh, I'm asking for a motion and second, uh, and approval for the five conferences listed there, just so everybody understands. These, these are all being run virtually at this point in time.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahearn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kostalik. Any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. President, that, uh, fifth, um, conference was added after the agenda was posted. So that was the other change I was referencing to is it is correct on the website and you all, everybody does have the correct version.
Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Hoover, uh, board presidents, correspondents. There is none at this time, uh, the executive session discussion. Um, we discussed legal matters and personnel, uh, board reports.
Um, Joe, maybe in two weeks, we can have a finance committee meeting now that Mrs. Ahearn's up and, uh, running here with us. So we'll, we'll schedule something with, uh.
Yeah, I would love it. Yep, we'll get it done.
You work, we'll work with Mrs. Ahearn and Nick and see when they're available because we all have a ton of availability.
Uh, I have some buildings and grounds. Um, we have a virtual meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-eighth at ten AM. However, the energy savings construction is continuing while our buildings are closed for education. Um, as it is deemed as critical construction in accordance with the resolution approved earlier this evening. Uh, I also wanted to make mention that, uh, we have the PlanCon reimbursement coming back to us for the middle school project. There was a moratorium hold on these reimbursements. So we should be receiving, uh, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for, uh, reimbursement from the Department of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Anybody else?
Nick.
Yes.
For Still Center, um, how many West Smithland seniors are affected, uh, by the COVID that go to Mon Valley and Still Center?
I'm not sure about the exact number. I know it's, we have a small amount there. Um, I'd have to ask, have to call up Dr. Rice and ask.
And do you know any plans that they have for their graduation?
Right now, it's still up in the air. It's, it's not decided yet.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a question regarding.
Uh, Mrs. Kostalik, I can tell you that I believe that Mon Valley is, uh, planning a virtual graduation. Of course, I only know that because I believe my husband is doing the music for it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Nick, I have a question. Um, the, I know there's upcoming construction scheduled. I'm not sure, is it just Still Center or is it Still Center and Mon Valley?
I think it, I think it's some construction for both. I have some paperwork over here. It's just some, they've been working, we've been working on some small things around there the last year or so, like some paving and other stuff, but we're going to be making recommendations in the future.
Will they?
We're just, we're discussing now, but like the phase two, like what we're going to be doing next.
Okay, is there an estimated construction cost for that?
That's what's up in discussion right now about what we're going to do.
They did, did they approve the feasibility?
Yeah, we're working on it now. Yeah, we're working on it now, the feasibility, but I was getting back to each school district about prioritizing from a plan that they did about five or six years ago. And they never followed through with some of the maintenance. So they're, they're going to prioritize and get back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Erin, Dr. Hoover and I attended a meeting back in January with the superintendents of business. And at the time, their plan short was, was fifteen million dollars, if I'm not mistaken. Our, we would have been on the hook if, if it goes through, obviously rates are a little lower now than they were then. But our estimated payment over a twenty-year period would have been, was in the realm of a hundred and ten to a hundred and eleven thousand dollars per year. The interest that they, if I recall, was, I think, close to, after it was all paid off, the project would have cost about twenty-two million dollars. I have not heard anything since that meeting. Obviously, you know, things have changed drastically since January and not, unfortunately not for the better. So I, I must, if Nick would know, they're continuing to move forward with that, but we have not been officially notified of any commitments or in, right, Dr. Hoover, I don't, I have not heard anything from them.
As of yet, and that was only Still Center. They did not do any cost analysis or feasibility, to my knowledge, on Mon Valley as of yet. And that's going to be an additional cost.
Yeah, I, I think once someone there said that you'd easily be looking for the same monetary outlay with the Mon Valley. Because obviously those schools are old and have been neglected for a long time.
Well, thank you for that information. I appreciate.
Anybody else have any board reports?
Yeah, one more for policy. I know we had the gender, the transgender policy, the proposal before for coming up with a plan. Obviously, with the circumstances, that got delayed a little bit. I've been talking with the G S A group and hopefully to have a plan or have that policy in place or guidelines for the start of the new school year coming up. So.
Mr. Mattis, I have some additional guidelines that I've put together. You want to have a policy committee meeting? I'd be happy to get those over to you so that all of you can review them as well.
Yeah, if we could do a Zoom meeting between the policy committee, we'll figure out a date that we could do up here in the next couple of weeks and get that back in motion.
All right, anybody else? Solicitors report?
I have.
No report other than what we had on there for the special ed.
Okay, any old business? Any new business?
Dr. Hoover, will you be sending out anything regarding graduation and then the plan that you and your staff came up with?
Yeah, tomorrow I have a letter going out to all the senior students regarding graduations and some additional dates and plans for senior celebrations. So they, if it comes out tomorrow, hopefully they'll have it Saturday, if the latest Monday. Also, I'll be doing another all call tomorrow, which state the same thing, just via the phone.
I appreciate what you, as a parent of a senior, you and all your staff have done to try to fit in this crazy world we're living in. So thank you.
I have a new business item. I just, I just wanted to make mention that the U.S. Secretary of Education announced today that more than thirteen point two billion in emergency relief funds are now available to state and local education agencies to support continued learning for K to twelve students whose educations have been disrupted by the coronavirus. Dr. Hoover, if you want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, that's the CARES Act. That's the federal stimulus money that's being pumped into schools being affected by the coronavirus. In fact, the CARES that actually is an acronym again for the Corona's aid, relief, economic security act. Again, I happen to have it up and just read that off of there. Again, it's, it's hopefully going to be money that is going to be provided to us to offset some of the costs that we're experiencing and also to be able to provide some, or purchase some additional funding for our learning program, especially in grades K through five. So we're looking forward to, we're projected to get about somewhere in the area of five hundred and fifty to five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is the amount, and they're paralleling it to Title One, which is what we, our first initial requirement. So if we get that, we're going to obviously use it wisely and to benefit our students and families.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We don't, we don't have to apply for any of those grants. That's automatically given to us?
Yeah, no, you don't have to apply for this one. It's going to be provided to us. There's some guidelines again and regulations you have to follow, but yeah, they're going to provide to every school, to my knowledge.
We, we have been tracking every penny that we spent that would be considered related to the situation we're currently in. So I believe that we will have the ability to get reimbursed for a lot of the expenses that we're incurring as a result of this.
Does this bill allow for process improvement, like making our educational environment a lot more available to everybody? I know we're, we have a lot of paper floating out there, K through five, that we can sort of pull everybody. If God forbid that there's a recurrence of this, that they can, everybody can attend class online and learn? Or is this just to cover the expenses that are already?
It's absolutely for remote learning and to provide devices and professional developments. Obviously, a big piece to that. The learning management system and then hopefully we're going to have some money still available to provide for some of the extraordinary costs that we're experiencing right now.
That's great. Thanks, Dr. Hoover.
Yes, I think some of that money may need to be set aside for special education, for compensatory education.
And I know that in conversations in our technology committee meetings that the K through five students, one-to-one technology is, is being looked at as far as future plans go. So that's just something I want to put out there.
Good.
All right, does anybody else have any other new business? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern, second by Mrs. White, meeting adjourned.